Good evening, everyone. Happy New Year. So our 2023 School Committee meetings today is You know what I But it's not letting me There we go, okay. Today is Wednesday, January 11, 2023. This is a meeting of the Gloucester School Committee. We are meeting at Gloucester High School Library at 32 Leslie O. Johnson Road. The time is 6 p.m. Consistent with Chapter 107 of the Acts of 2022, this meeting will be conducted by real participation. Public may not physically attend this meeting, but every effort will be made to allow the public to view and listen to the meeting in real time and participate when necessary. I will say that the mission for Gloucester Public Schools is for all students to be successful, engaged, lifelong learners. We will do a roll call. Who is here? Amy, would you like to start? We're gonna just say who's here for the record?
Sure.
Amy Vasco, Superintendent.
Listen, Tex, Air Prince, School Committee Member.
Kathy Clancy, School Committee Member.
Samantha Watson, School Committee Member.
Bill Melvin, School Committee Member.
Laura Wiesen, School Committee Member.
Greg Berett, Mayor and School Committee Member.
Keith Minio, School Committee Member.
And Maria Paglisi, Recording Center.
So, so here's how it order, and we are going into executive session, and we will return to open session once that executive session is is complete. So do we have a motion to go into executive session? So move for the, I wonder if we go executive session for the purpose for pursuant to chapter 30A, Section 21A, for the purposes of discussing litigation strategy. Second. We have a motion and a second. We have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Verda.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wiesen.
Yes.
Chairperson Clancy.
Yes.
And Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
So we will resume the open meeting as soon as we are done. Good evening, everyone. We are going back into open session. Continuing the meeting of the Gloucester School Committee on Wednesday, January 11, 2023. Next item of business is oral communications. If you are calling in on a phone, you can press star nine to request a speech. If you are watching on a computer or device, there is a raise hand button that you can tap or press to request a speech. Could you use either of those options? Start oral communications to be recognized to speak. If anybody does want to speak, you are limited to three minutes each, and so identify yourself and yeah, summarize is what we expect. Is there anybody in attendance that would like to address the school committee?
Marianne.
Okay, Marianne. You are welcome to speak.
Thank you, Marianne Albert-Pache. Happy New Year to all of you. I'll make this very quick. I was just at the last meeting, the subcommittee meeting, and I basically could only see Bill Melvin, and it was very difficult to hear a lot of the meeting or some of the meeting, and I would ask that future meetings, maybe if everybody's faces could be shown so that we can see and hear everything that you do say, it would be greatly appreciated. Thank you so much.
Marianne, can you hear us now?
I can right now, and I see all of your faces, but the last meeting I could not. It was very difficult. I could hear background talking amongst the members, and I was unable to understand what was being discussed with some of it. So I just wanted to put that out there, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Next item of business is recognitions. Anybody have any recognitions?
I can't remember if we had a meeting since this, but I feel like it's been forever, but someone mentioned the holidays. That happened. I can just be on to go, it feels like. It was both the omelet band and the high school band. I went with my husband and my two kids, and it was excellent. The chorus was there as well. And so of course, unfortunately, weren't able to stay for the whole thing, because my kids can't hang. But it was just very cool to sort of see the omelet band and the high school band together and just being able to see that progression of skill and just the like pure joy on the teachers' faces. They clearly love their jobs, and they just do a nice job. So kudos to them.
I just want to recognize the students that we met yesterday during the CBTE visit and all the inspectors. I don't think I could be anymore. The work that the students are doing and are doing within the program, and some of the explanations that the students gave us were just outstanding. So really appreciated the opportunity. Roll call picture later. A couple, you're not included. I agree. I'm just finished. That's all right. No, I'm used to it.
All right. Thank you for the recognitions. I do not see our student advisory council must be busy this evening, so we will move on. The next item is the consent agenda. Does anybody have any items on the consent agenda that they would like to remove? And will we include the consent agenda? Second. We have a roll call vote, please.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
May Verda stepped out.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wiesen.
Yes.
Chairperson Clancy.
Yes.
And Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Without objection, I would like to take the first item under action, which is the Massachusetts Executive Office of Education fiscal year 2023 Skills Capital Facility in Round 2 grant to Gloucester High School. It's $17,000, so without objection.
So I'll introduce Brenda Waslick, who is our new Director of our Career Vocational Education Programs here at Gloucester High. Bert, you're here. Everyone got, most of them got Tisbyer yesterday, when she gave us fabulous tour programs for electrical, carpentry, automotive, and advanced manufacturing programs, and she's here to just give you a quick summary about the skills grants, which you saw sort of in action yesterday, but Brenda, just welcome, first of all, welcome.
Thank you.
Your first school committee. Thank you again for yesterday, which was great again to see the programs, our students, see their work. And appreciate you being here and all the work you're doing to strengthen and then expand our CBT programs.
Thank you. The grant was written for for two shops. It was limited to that. Advanced Manufacturing and Carpentry under the state auspices, but the compressor technology supports more than those two programs. They run the machines basically for the auto carpentry and events manufacturing programs, which is three quarters of our vocational programs. So it's going to be upgrading technology for the compressors and then some new equipment for the carpentry shop. Bring it more up to speed industry standard wise, and the split is pretty much is pretty fairly 50/50 in that in the grant. I don't know if you have any other questions or if that's adequate. So why don't you tell how old the compressor I'm saying, uh, maybe 60 years old? I don't know. We didn't test the rust on them, but they're at least 60 years old. The replacements sorely needed. One of them had been locked out and tagged out over the pandemic because they are equipment that needs to run, and it needs to run constantly, and the pandemic kind of put the stops to one of them. And what happens is you buy, you buy two, and they back each other up to support. So every configuration has the two compressors that the workload stock that would support the other. And we know areas. It also supports the cabinetry program as well, which is ancillary to the chapter. Any more questions?
Wonderful news.
Sorry, just the last piece is this, this is, as we've been explaining and working on with the community's support, you know, expanding our current programs, and I'm sorry, strengthening our current programs and also expanding the new program. Part of the strengthening is modernizing the technology.
Absolutely.
This is one of those steps, the first step that, well, not the first step of strengthening, but the first step of strengthening, sort of modernizing some of the equipment. There's other work which Brenda did, we'll come back later in the school year, talk about in terms of strengthening your work. Brenda gave you a short summary of that yesterday, strictly the program instruction assessment and sort of stuff for students. But certainly, you were yesterday in the tour, certain work you're doing, strengthening partnership, certain areas, so pretty excited about that. And I think one thing you got a great look at yesterday was on just how the kids are actively engaged and learning deeply. And also, I think folks have witnessed this, the incredible commitment and enthusiasm, the expertise of our staff there. These folks are devoted to the work to the students.
Just to, just to broaden that, this particular grant is completely foundational. This is where we start. Without this, we can't really build further, and the projects that the students were working on are notable. There are the Sheds for the Veterans Project, the new school, and solar panels to energize the auto shop and other parts of the vocational shops with solar energy.
As we see on the screen now is yesterday, where the students installed their first panel, solar panels on the side of the auto shop. It's been, that's been an effort, it's been in progress for a number of years, working alongside the DPW on that. But the students not only installing, you know, putting up the panels, what I've done, as you saw yesterday, all the electrical, you know, developing the electrical panel inside and all the conduit to to capture electricity and then utilize it in shop. So they are doing the full installation from, you know, on their own as well as, and that's really the approach that folks take, is Bob Devlin, our electrical instructor, likes to say, he likes to keep his hands clean, and the students get their hands dirty, it will work. So, but Bob's down there on the, on the right, down here, next to Jack Porter, who's the, you know, head auto teacher. And they're obviously talking about some of the things that are going on with panels there. On the left, you have student Sam Rodriguez, Advanced Manufacturing and ROTC student, who's some educating members about the high-tech advanced manufacturing, manufacturing equipment, which I cannot remember right now.
Well, there's CNC lanes there. I don't know that particular machine, but they have CNC lanes and the other, the other set of equipment escapes me, but there's several different.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I'm just, I can't see it, can't identify on sight.
The other piece that runs, of course, the coding students do to program the advanced lanes and then have it run. So this is great stuff, and Sam was a great representative of the school and also program.
Have a question. To the administration or Brenda. So I'm hearing we're going to buy tools for the carpentry department. Equipment. Equipment. Okay. Do we have an inventory list of equipment, date we got it, per se, of the assets of our vocational programs? I would say Partially, because certainly all the computers are inventory. Yeah. I do not know about the equipment per se, if it's been tagged, maybe Jane.
Grant, grantings that are purchased with grants.
Yeah.
All right.
So in other words, if I asked, how many screwdrivers are in the auto shop, do we know? We don't know.
No.
No.
We know the purchase, we know the purchases, and the, the, the teachers keep that, and, you know, they keep that information. But one of the things of, you know, having Brenda on board is the ability to centralize some of that oversight.
Right.
So it's not just on the teacher.
Because I'm just thinking, going forward, and I know you have so much dropped into your lap, just starting, and I'm not trying to make a point of you. It would make sense that as a school district, and when we're talking about budget and programs and stuff, that we would actually know what's there, right? Like we inventory our kitchens, we should be inventorying our vocational program assets as well. It's just that we have an idea. The last time we bought hammers was in 1970, right? Or whatever, just so that we have an idea of what we're doing, the investments that are going in, if things get lost or need to be replaced. You know, I think that is a conversation that should be ongoing, the BNF, to keep vocational programming at our, you know, the forefront of us. You know, we do other departments, so it'd be interesting if we could start doing something like that, or at least talk about starting to do something. Part of the vision and part of the, the, the modernization of those shops, for example, in carpentry and electrical and auto, we're getting storage. You saw some of those in electrical that can be locked up. Right. So then the students, when it's time to clean up, are responsible for returning the amount of tools, as it were, to maintain that. A lot of them, and they're not tools that can be used in perpetuity either, you know, so they, they have a shelf life, even though it may be longer. But part of the plan is, you know, Snap-on has these beautiful shelves where you have a full set of tools for the day. You take them out from your job, and then you make sure they're back as part of your grade cleanup, the whole flow of the shop. So that is definitely part of what we're planning to do.
Then I see that addition to that, I think something we were getting at as well, was that we can say, if these tools haven't been bought since 1960, since 19 whatever, you know, 2000 or whatever, that then helps us, you, Brenda, Jane, build a case for the BNF and the committee.
Exactly.
This is what we need, so.
And that we do have, we do have the purchasing is, is, we do make reference to that, and one of them was the reasons for that. That helps a lot with the Perkins Grant planning, to know what we've used previously, and also to make sure we're sharing the wealth across the shops and things. So, so with purchasing, we do have that data to be able to look back at, like, when did you purchase this and that?
Right, and I mean
Right, exactly.
But I think we should, it's a discussion for another day.
Yeah.
But definitely want to have it another day. Yes, but it is also in that frameworks that you need a certain caliber of tools Exactly. to, to work. Right. Particularly in auto, you have to have up-to-date tools, and that's right in the frameworks. So that solidifies the grant process and everything we're talking about. Good to know. Thank you. That's good.
Just a quick comment on, I noticed the three, like the 3D printers that you have, and brand of maker bought. I mean, you know, if you think about tech, and I'm only, I'm only, this more comments than anything else, and only because I'm in the manufacturing world, that, you know, you think old time stuff is CNC machining. That's how they used to make my CNC machining. Now they've gone to 3D printing.
Yeah.
Next is laser printed. That's three times faster than 3D printed.
Yeah.
Do you find that more kids are interested in, you know, the 3D printing aspect of it? And I realize it's kind of a program that, you know, introduces kids to these technologies, but the real trick is going to be to stay, you know, 125 years from now, there might not be CNC machines. Everything might be laser printed, you know.
Yeah.
I can show you pictures of huge jet engine parts that are basically laser printed or 3D printed versus the old days of putting them on a spindle, CNC machining them for five days to produce your car. So, I mean, not so much, I'd like to hear some feedback just on, hey, you know, do the kids recognize that? That, hey, this is the future right here, 3D printing, laser printing.
You're talking, you're talking about two different things. You're talking about the output devices.
Yeah.
And we also have the input devices where they're designing, and that software is state-of-the-art, brand new. And where, where you take them out to is, it could be the 3D printer. It's the same basis in the software, it's the SolidWorks and the Mastercam.
Right.
And the kids all have access to the, to those pieces of software, and they could take it to the CNC machine, or they can take it out to the 3D printer, or to the laser engraver, et cetera. So, so the basis, the foundation is the same, it's just the output devices that, and technically, the output devices, except for the mechanical breakdowns,
Yeah, yeah.
are basically a lot simpler for training and to use than it is to get that software.
Right.
So.
Very interesting.
And there are a few different entry points to, to that as well. So we, we do have the advanced manufacturing program, but we also have our engineering classes, including the class engineering, manufacturing, and design, where they actually learn about some of the benefits of the different processes of, you know, 3D printing verse milling. And they, one of the things students in that class determine is what might be, if I were to go beyond the prototype, right, of this costing out, what would be the best way of mass manufacturing this particular device that they've created? Say it's something to amplify the sound in your cell phone.
Sure.
For example, students are designing, and they, they figure out what, what are some of the best ways of doing that. So there's the advanced manufacturing class that we got to see, and then we have our engineering classes as well. There are different kind of entry points to some of the same design and the same technology, but different ways of getting into it.
Very interesting stuff. I'm gonna say, like Melissa said, conversation for another day, but just kind of expand on that, to let kids know, hey, you know, first you're going to find the right technology to make the part that you do, you know, let's suppose cost effective, it's most time sensitive, all that kind of stuff.
Yeah.
A lot of people don't even think about that, but
That is
Part of the technology.
That, that's state-of-the-art.
Yeah.
The output devices.
Yeah.
I just wanted to say one thing. I'm sure we would love to hear a lot more about you and about the program, which will happen at a different meeting. Because every year we get a report on the vocational program. So it's great that you've been, you're here for us to accept. I think there are three grants here on our agenda for the vocational program, so we'll do that while you are here. And we look forward to hearing more from you and asking you even more questions, because we find that this is a great forum for the community to also get informed about what's happening at Gloucester High School. Absolutely, anytime. Okay, so I know that we accept the Massachusetts Executive Office of Education fiscal year 2023 Skills Capital Facility in Round 2 grant to Gloucester High School in the amount of 117,000. Second. Discussion. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Verda.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wiesen.
Yes.
Chairperson Clancy.
Yes.
And Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
And the next grant, most best manously, next grant is from the Gloucester Education Foundation in the amount of $15,000 to the Gloucester High School vocational program, and it is for the same or just the same compressor we just heard about. So much.
Second.
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Verda.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wiesen.
Yes.
Chairperson Clancy.
Yes.
And Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
And the third grant is Gloucester Education Foundation grant in the amount of $50,000 to the Gloucester High School Auto Motive Technology Program. The move. Any discussion? I would just say this is a continuation of my law, my law, this generosity to have our auto tech program be able to service more kits, which has been terrific.
Um, if, if, if you're allowed to, so this funding, this is the fourth year I've been for more law, for my law, this very generous donation to, yeah, it allows us to have a full second teacher in, you know, I may have, I won, you know, program who has a name, Bud Mason, right?
Yeah.
And I'd love James to talk a little bit about your impressions of the way Bud approaches work and works with students.
Sure, yeah, yeah. And folks got to see a little bit of this yesterday, and, you know, got to take it in action a little bit. But on a, you know, sort of regular day of, of, you know, these observations in the auto shop, one of the, you know, really cool things that I get to see is both Jack and Bud teaching a group of students in a way that fully realizes the, the, the basis of instruction in the school across the curriculum, right? So from a math teacher to what's going on in the shops, and that's the, the culture responsive teaching model that I, I talked about before. So you will see Bud talking about, you know, a vision of, say, the, you got to see the, the car on its side that they're going, you put the floor in, right? Quite a corroded old vehicle, and, you know, so, you know, so the igniting activity is the vision of how each student has a role in bringing that to, you know, a restoration, right? And then on a given day of instruction, he's going to chunk some material into 10 or 15 minutes of like, here's what we're going to be doing today. Right? So here's the instruction, here's the skill that this small group of students will be learning. Then he's, they're processing that by, by doing it themselves under his supervision, right? They're taking what that instruction and then putting it into action, like I said, under his supervision. And then in the wrap-up, there's what did you learn today? What are the takeaways? How far did you get? What, what did you run into that were problems that maybe you didn't anticipate going in? What do we need to do and pick up tomorrow? What might you need to learn to take it to the next step? And that, you know, one of the, the cool things that I get to see is see that kind of instruction of what it looks like in the auto shop, what it looks like in math, and so on. And the fact that we have Bud in the shop with Jack allows for more of that kind of individualized teaching, right? That kind of, that chunk of material, more students are able to supervise and actively processing and working on the, the cool projects that, that you got to see. And this really hit me, and really last year hit me so very clearly when I was doing those observations with that kind of simultaneous teaching. It also allows us to have more freshmen in, in, you know, that, that intro class, right? We have more students in the gateway. As you know, it's limited to 15 students per instructor. So we got more students than we're going to, that's, that's obvious, but the less obvious is allowing this fully realized vision of the, the brain-based, culturally responsive teaching that Bud's awesome habits. We really appreciate the grant for that reason.
And I just wanted to add that whenever I have the opportunity to be in the school, I'm always looking to say, well, is that an impactful teacher? And both those instructors are impacting people. You can tell that the kids are tuned into what they're saying, and they're enthusiastic about what they're putting out there. I'm always impressed by them.
Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Mayor Verda.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Wiesen.
Yeah.
Chairperson Clancy.
Yes.
And Mr. Melvin.
Yes.
Excellent grants to accept. Welcome to stay. Thank you so much. I still with more rest. Okay, we will move on to the literations on education issues and superintendent's report.
Hello, let me just jump in to, I'll start things off with a few just updates. Already coming, one of them was so tonight, a few things for me, then we'll go, Amy Vasco, lead presentation with James Cook, around the NEAS accreditation of the high school renewal of the NEAS accreditation at high school, give you a bicycle planning update, right by 2024, and then a few, and planning update, you have two updates, one on installation of the playground, but also a road relocation of the current memorial of that is at the playground. Okay, so jump in here, I did that one. Excellent. So just wanted to highlight the recent retirements of two longtime elementary school secretaries. I'm going to skip ahead this one. Kathy Doe, longtime secretary at East Gloucester, and a right-hand person of Amy Vasco, when she was principal there, retired in September. And I don't think And I don't think we recognized her that point. We didn't hear, they did a lot.
Yes.
But just a, a few things about um, Kathy was that uh, she, she was with us for twenty-eight years. Started as a new supervisor, probably then a yard lady, perhaps. Now back in uh, at West Parish. Um, became uh, secretary of West Parish at the Beeman and Bynland at her home, which, which is Gloucester. Um, and was at East Gloucester for.
Seven years.
For seven years, okay. Um, but.
Only she'd come for two.
So she's there for your whole, so your whole.
Yeah.
There you go. Um, and also was very instrumental in the creation of the nature's classroom. Uh, it says here, uh, we considered her the, uh, the married property. All right, uh, East Gloucester. Um, but, but really, um, she's retired. Um, we. Um, doing a fair bit of traveling now, but also spending quite a bit of time with family and grandchildren. Mostly local, so wanted to acknowledge Kathy. Um, and then, then just last week, um, Lois Lane from West Parish. Um, uh, retired uh, on the sixth. And um, Lois was the chick for more than twenty-two years, all at West Parish. She started there as a para, um, and then was a secretary for just over nineteen years, nineteen years. And as you can see. A lot celebrating Lois la- last weekend on Friday. Um, what you can see around her neck here and also the kids are putting on here is each uh, grade, each student rather. Put a link of a paper chain together and then hour by hour, our last Friday, the whole grade would come down and bestow their paper chain. With all their individual links, um, uh, uh, onto Lois, literally onto Lois. Um, and so you see her wrapped up and this is probably the fifth grader is here. Uh, so each gave her a, a message and I was there, I happened to stop by as well and happened, I. Purpose to say, say to the lowest. Um, but she was consulting, two students were crying. They were crying, um, for any other reason other than she was leaving. And as she said, one of them is a crier, one's definitely not a crier, but they were both crying, um, and. She assured them, and she assured Alina and others, including myself, that she's going to be back, so he's already signed her up for four days and stuff. Under a nice strip investment, so. Um, and then Lo- Lois, we love you in the upper right hand corner, um, that's the PTA is a great job. These are yard cards and every once in a while you see um, some top of the West Parish, it's a particularly big yard card for Lois, but. Just wanted to highlight those two, um, and, 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 and one wonderful people. But two, they themselves, both of them, but all our school secretaries are really linked in, in our school, our school communities, you know, they are. Um, a- a- as the chain is purposeful, um, you know, they, uh, they said Lois held, held them together. You know, and so, and that happens all over our schools, you know, school secretaries, and just wanted to um, acknowledge that, to condemn, it's also acknowledged cast too. But just really highlight what a important role every single day our school secretary should play. Um, in our lives or communities and it just, this, this really is so much good to do in our schools, so.
Yeah, um, my, my kids came home uh, that day and, and had a lot of nice things uh, to say about Lois. And that they were gonna miss her and judging by my kids, they, they, they said, oh, all the kids were really gonna miss her. So, and she, she was front facing, you know, at the, at the door, you know, all the kids knew her and yeah, it's gonna be. A big transition for them.
Yeah. They all came home sweating as the dance party they had.
Hmm.
It's a very big party.
So, and also welcome to Alina Castello, who replaced Lois and the Taravina, who replaced Kathy. You know, and they're gonna be obviously a big picture in those schools as well, so. Uh, another thing is, um, we have now completed the new website launches for all schools. Oh, thank goodness. So they are a lot easier to uh, bind iteration, to navigate, to, to use on a mobile device. They're very friendly to phones, that sort of thing, um, much easier to update. Um, uh, Brian folks can, can update them and we're working on that. Um, have some silver structures, I'm sorry, I'm just showing you sort of the header of each one. Um, that, that's West Parish and Gloucester preschool and then O'Malley and Gloucester High. Um, this is, I would say, this is, this is a huge improvement for our task, okay? Um, at the same time, it's, they're sort of, um, a step in the right direction. They're not the end goal, um, the end goal will be probably uh, much more robust in maybe a couple of years. Um, and, and, and the, these are all built on Google sites, which is very helpful and very uh, easy to update. And uh, and very mobile, um, integrated with mobile devices. Um, and, and so it's, it's real strong, it's in the right direction. And there are, it also allows us to, um, you know, link, link them in a way. Where we're updating um, a file or a document or um, history or that sort of thing in one place and it's, it's um, all, you know. Getting updated in multiple places, so that helps as well.
Yeah.
So a strong improvement, um, is in the right direction. Are they standalone sites then, or are they just, everything's picked up off the main? No, so the challenge with, um, they are standalone sites and uh, even more so. Yeah, the, for example, the, the, the first one we knew was the district website and multiple standalone sites. That appears one, but the backend is not one. Nice. That's one of the, that's one of the limitations.
Yeah.
Because with Google, the access in terms of updating, it, it had, how you give access is pretty limited.
Right.
And of course, we want multiple people to be able to update it, um, because we don't have staff to do one for all, all of them. In order to have that, those privileges, you do have to sort of nest separate sites. So that's, that's one of the challenges that that then plays out. It's good for updating at the current and managing the site, it's bad for things like search. That's why the search function aren't, aren't, don't um, operate across all sites or even the district site. Is that, am I clear about that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I just have one small suggestion for all of the schools. Is under staff directory or even online, the very front page, have a place where it says who you email for attendance. Does that make sense?
Yep.
Um, cause he, I, this is something I went here with the new changeover from Lois to Darlene, right? So there wasn't, I didn't know. The email address and I would imagine that that's becoming probably cumbersome for the school to sort of have to make all those phone calls, follow up. Um, so to just have a, a, either be like attendance at the school or as. Yeah, I think it might just help streamline the process of that, parents especially and the school backend.
Cause I don't do this ever, I would have a child in school when I die, when I.
Yeah, my husband just kept saying, but there's no this attendant at.
Right, so, so.
I email. But do we accept emails for attendance?
Yeah, that's what I do.
Uh, great, great. I will hand it over to Amy and James and they will um, give it up, they ask accreditation. And then I'll step back to another. Peter, what you're forgetting there. Yeah, I'll share it.
Okay.
Why don't you start, um, just give me a minute.
Snakes, I'll be sure. Okay, sorry about that. Um.
No worries.
Ben, we'll pull it up. Um, what you're going to see is a new design for a slideshow of best Gloucesters, I'm gonna show that off. Um, I got a little carried away. Um, I'm gonna give Grant Harris the credit for the fishman on the front.
Great.
It's his drawing.
Thank you, which reminds me, I, I, I have to interrupt you, I'm sorry. Grant Harris, the legendary websites. Okay, the schools have also helped out a ton, but he, in terms of design, in terms of approach, in terms of leadership, in terms of getting it done. And I would really ruin this if I didn't, didn't acknowledge that, so sorry, bud.
Also used his illustration skills to create the icons that's here and on our website, on the high school's website.
He drew that, yes.
Yeah, and if you look at the field house as well, the center icon in, in the field house, it's Grant's.
Wow.
Yes.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah.
We can a little credit for that, um, but I stole his uh, image and made a slideshow, so there you go. All right, you go ahead. Um, so this, the Niasse presentation, um, there's some, well, you go ahead. Uh, James is gonna start off with talking about the process and I get to talk about all the good stuff they said about us.
Thank you, Amy, for that, and so it's a long process, as you all know, because we've been, I've been giving reports for a very long time, but all. Uh, seven years that I've been principal of Gloucester High School, so um, way back in uh, uh, we. Way back in two thousand eighteen, we had completed the self-reflection report. That report took a couple of years to create, so really it began as soon as I became principal of Gloucester High School. As the um, uh, program leader for the English department, I was already working on elements specific to English of the, the Niasse report. Um, so this self-reflection report, it was, was part of a new design for twenty twenty. What Niasse calls their vision twenty twenty. And instead of having one giant report and then after ten years. Having a uh, team come and evaluate the report and talk to people and do all these things and then give a rating. They designed a couple, three steps so that you could work on things before the accreditation report. So the first thing you would do is reflect on, okay, where are we in the standards, in the Niasse standards? Uh, how, how are we doing? How's our progress? Um, and then they would send a small team of folks, um, made up of uh, representative from Niasse as well as uh, area educators. Um, which principals give folks time off to go visit schools and read the reports and. Uh, go into classrooms and talk to students and look at student presentations. So that happened in the collaborative conference visit in October of two thousand eighteen. Um, and then they gave us their report, the collaborative conference report in February of two thousand nineteen. The collaborative conference visit uh, coincided um, pretty closely with. The process that we underwent with um, a, another organization um, that through DESI. Uh, came and also uh, gave us feedback on the school. So we had the Niasse visit, the collaborative, collaborative conference visit. Uh, and we had the school works visit around the same time that was came from DESI. Uh, fortunately, they said a lot of the same things, right? Which was really beneficial. And uh, so when we were creating the um, school growth plan. Um, in May of two thousand nineteen, we were at the same time creating a sustainable improvement plan for DESI. And we, and even though the standards are a little bit different for Niasse than they are for DESI, we made sure they were aligned. And so you might remember from some of my presentations, I would crosswalk them and show, okay, this is what we're doing for Niasse, but it's, it's similar. To what we're doing and here's how the two fit together. So as far as the staff knows, they've done one thing, right? I, you know, and I know, and I show them where we're doing two, you know, of two different people we're communicating with. But in terms of the vision for the school, it's one vision for the school. So that we put together in May of two thousand nineteen, um, we then. Uh, had a couple of years to bear COVID, largely, to put this plan into action, which we did. Despite all the other things we were dealing with, um, and then created the reflective summary report. This is a longer report, um, that um, now says with this growth plan. What have we been able to do with the feedback from the collaborative conference visit? Uh, what have we been able to get done? We shared that with the Niasse in this big reflective summary report. That the faculty uh, wrote and then approved by the September of twenty twenty-one. And then in October of twenty twenty-one, uh, visiting teams came to Gloucester High School. Um, to uh, to the ten year accreditation visit. By that point, it was almost twelve years because of some delays, as you might expect, but we still call it the ten, the decennial review. Um, and what Amy will be showing is um, then another year. It took uh, the, the woman, Allison Gary, uh, who works for Niasse, and we, we love working with Allison. She's super helpful for the school, gives us great feedback and helps us various steps. Um, she had a baby in the interim, so in addition to COVID, then we had a baby and, and that took another year. Uh, so it, we had about a delay in getting the report that Amy will finally be presenting tonight and there's a lot of good news in it.
Excellent, thank you. So the report um, is broken into four parts. There's two priority areas and we'll talk about that. Then there's the reflection of student learning, James talked a little bit about that. And then there's a capacity for continuous growth. So the first thing we're gonna talk about is priority one, and that's brain-based, culturally responsive instructional practices. You've heard this when we talked about um, MCAS and how, how we're moving forward at, at high school. We talked about professional development, we, you've heard about this for several years now, that um, we're really implementing it correctly. Um, slowly and continuously, so that is really going to make um, a difference, so. Priority here is the brain-based cultural response of instructional practices and that's to support learning. Uh, for students for higher order thinking and to engage them and demonstrate communication, collaboration, problem solving skills. All lining up with a vision of a graduate and also to have a written um, curriculum that supports that brain base. So we have several commendations, um, we would be here online if I ran all the commendations, so I'm gonna highlight a few. Um, one I want to talk about, um, to hear that a feeling of the majority of students. That have at least one adult in the school that cares for them means a lot. To know that they had, they can say, there's at least somebody in that school they could go to, that's an outstanding commendation. Um, and the commitment of the school and the district to do its best for students. That kind of just makes you proud, just hearing that, right? Um, to have a strong foundational structures that support professional learning. Um, such as PLCs and structural leadership teams, racial equity teams and other student growth teams. That's something that we don't see in every high school, so it's tremendous that it's here. There are a few other, many other commendations, but I'll let you read through, sorry. Right, with the working boat. All right, priority two, um, is to increase social emotional learning. And if I, if we remember back to uh, James's discussion about um, professional development. He talked about those two buckets, it was that instructional and social emotional, and that's carried out throughout, so it's really outstanding to see that. Um, and that's to promote self-awareness, self-management, responsible decision-making, responsible uh, skills and social awareness. Spur student wellness, um, attendance, transition from the middle school and equity and inclusion. So this is all like really important work that they do on a continuous basis. Um, so for this, they, we have two slides full of commendations, but I'll highlight uh, just a few from each. Um, that has school, school-wide focus on the social emotional wellbeing of all students and teachers. That's outstanding, um, the school-wide commitment to the work on equity and inclusion, including, including professional learning and day-to-day implementation strategies. So those are things that they do every day to make sure everybody feels that they belong, they're included. And they're represented in the school, so there's a lot of work that um, is tremendous at the joint of high school. It's work that needs to continue, we're not done, but they're certainly going in the right track. Um, if you want to next slide, continue, sorry, all right? Um, so the diverse opportunities for professional development for faculty and staff, that's an outstanding thing that we have for our teachers. That they have multiple opportunities to grow their craft. Um, the elimination of barriers to school and learning for all students through the uh, creation of the D cap and how they implement that. So to, to work, it, there's always going to be barriers, but to continuously work to take, knock down those barriers so students can engage. And be part of the curriculum is what they do every day. And faculty and staff support student-led equity and inclusion initiatives. We're gonna keep hearing the student-led this year as well, and as we go on with our our plan for ongoing improvement, it's really important. The students have a part of their learning and they have a voice, and so it's wonderful out there, and it was seen at the high school. Our next part is the reflection of student learning. And this is gonna look at the instructional practices, the design to meet the student needs, multiple opportunities for students to demonstrate their knowledge and to share and collaborate. So that's what we're gonna highlight in this section. And, if you want. The variety of instructional strategies was noted as a strength at Gloucester High School. And also to have choices provided for students to demonstrate their knowledge. So, we heard a little bit more about this in the O'Malley presentation about the UDL, about student choice. That's already embedded in the high school, so it's an outstanding thing that they're doing there, and to have, so they can have multiple ways of sharing their knowledge. And also the intentional use of social-emotional wellness strategies by teachers to get a greater awareness of how the students are doing, that's an outstanding. The capacity for continuous growth, so this is talking about conceptual understanding, commitment, competency and capacity for growth.
Among staff.
Among staff, yes. And I didn't tell James I was gonna highlight this next one, but it is in here, go ahead, and it's certainly well-deserved. The competency of the principal's leadership, as well as other strong leaders within the building, was noted as a strength at Gloucester High School. So, that's something.
He keeps wanting to stick it out.
Yes, and so I didn't tell him I was gonna not note it, but it is well-deserved, okay? Also, the time built into the school schedule for PLC and department units. I actually was talking with somebody from another district, and I said I worked in Gloucester, and they said, oh, I met the principal and they do not work on the vision of the graduate thing, so it's wonderful what you're doing. So, and it's noted by NEAS, so that's wonderful.
Can you describe your change on PLCs, professional learning communities? In case folks don't know, you're listening or you're wrong.
Sure, so professional learning communities are a time we have built into the school day. So in our new five-day schedule, teachers have a couple of days in the cycle where they, well, one day where they need as a whole department and another two days where they need in smaller professional learning communities to work on developing curriculum, instruction, and assessments together with other people. So, for example, right now we have mid-year assessments coming up, and so they're looking at the common elements that will be in the mid-year assessments, and then planning for after the mid-year assessments happen. What do we learn from that, right? Where are students doing strong, what are some surprises? Where we may need to reteach some things in the second half of the year, where students didn't do quite as well. In a lot of high schools, that's left up to the individual teachers. There isn't time built into the day where folks get to do that together. And especially where you get some, you know, lead teachers being able to guide that work for, so that their expertise really gets through the whole department. And that's one of the things we've been able to do with our schedules, design the time in. And that's actually taking commitment also, you know, through contract negotiations and all these kinds of things, that the committee has helped with that over the years, so we have that built in, and other folks are jealous of us having that.
Yes. So those were a long list of accommodations. These are the complete recommendations, there are four. To continue the work of differentiating lessons, activities, and materials in all classes to meet the needs of all students. To develop a more student-centered instructional strategy so that students are doing the majority of the thinking and doing during their classes. So when we talked about culturally responsive teaching, that's the chewing part. When we, James described it in the auto class, where they get to go and think about the lesson that was taught and known it. So they are encouraged, you guys, to develop more student-centered. Remember, this was from a couple of years ago visit, so we are already on the right track, so it's really good to see. To ensure that all classes at all levels use higher-order thinking activities on a daily basis. We always can improve there, so that's one of the things we're working on. And to continue to develop strategies for the implementation and application of conceptual understandings the faculty have gained.
So that's sort of code for that we, high school teachers have an understanding of social-emotional learning in a way that, you know, certainly when I started 24 years ago, that was not an expectation of a high school teacher. So that's one conceptual understanding, the other conceptual understanding is the brain-based cultural responsive teaching. The design of the lesson is also, you know, understood, not just the content area understanding that the physics teacher has or the calculus teacher has, but they also understand how to design the time they have with students to ignite the learning, chunk the material, to give them a chance to actively process and then review. So that's what they mean when they say, implementation and application of conceptual understandings. So, you know, when I talked to Alison about this, I was able to, you know, talk about how this year through the professional development that you heard Amy present back in the fall. We were really focusing on teachers presenting those brain-based lessons to their peers and getting feedback. That's what we mean by the implementation and application. So it's great to, when we finally got the report, that, okay, these are the four things we're focused on, so we'll be able to keep doing that. We didn't have to do any course changes based on the report.
It's nice to know we're on the right track.
And from my point, it's all deep, you know, about deepening the work, getting cemented into the culture and everyday practice. And particularly the piece, I mean, those examples of, you know, I always taught, when I was teaching, that I left exhausted every day, and the students sort of print out of school, right? If we make sure the students are doing more of their thinking, more of their doing, more of, you know, organizing more, that's where it stops. And that's, that's where the speed.
And you got exhausted now.
Yes.
Yes.
Also, you don't.
Good luck with that. Alright, so James is gonna talk for a minute about the process and then next steps.
So, then the next step in the, in the cycle is, we, this shows sort of the overall, you know. Yeah, so, as a school community, we, you know, we, the report praised how we did in each phase of the process, including, you know, identifying our strengths, our areas of need, hosting the conference, developing the improvement plan, and then completing our own report for feedback. And that then allowed NEAS to give us feedback on the things we wanted them to observe, right? How are we doing progressing in these areas? I did go on a visit a few years ago, and the school, before the collaborative conference, hadn't really done a lot of the work yet. They were kind of waiting for NEAS to come in and tell where to go. So this first part was really about how by doing this work upfront, and the faculty just spent so much time in each area, right? The shop teachers, the English departments, the physical education teachers. You've seen generalities here, but it's all the detail that goes into the full staff. So then the report gives us a blueprint for how we can move forward to improve the quality of our programs. You saw the four recommendations, those are the areas we're gonna continue to work in. You already knew about them from a prior report, so we keep leaning in and deepening the work as Ben suggested. So then, I will be working with Alison Geary again with NEAS to submit a first report of progress and planning. He did it verbally recently, because where you see a three-year and six-year report, for us, it's gonna be a two-year and a five-year report, because we already are a year in. Right, because we were waiting for the report, but because we were already doing the work and in contact with Alison, that's really no problem for us. So then, two years from now, I will be doing a, working with my instructional leadership team on a two-year report, and then five years in the five-year report. As we get closer to that 10-year cycle again, after the six-year report, that's when we begin those steps that I outlined at the beginning, we begin them all over again after the six-year report. Zero five years from now. That's the follow-up.
Any questions? I have a question.
Does, first, kudos, right, James, for being recognized in all the great work going on at the high school. My question is, when, so we got this presentation tonight, right, it makes us feel good, you know, we're doing it tonight. What are the teachers getting, like, did they, have they been informed, like, is there a thank you, you know, couldn't do this without you? Look what we're doing, you know, look at the recognition, look at every single one of the recognitions, you know, and look where we are already, considering the recommendations they made, like, it's, what kind of conversation is going on?
Yes, we did it, we did that yesterday. We had our, you know, the faculty meeting, we had cookies, cookies and coffee yesterday for the faculty and the, and the big, so, you know, presentation of those recommendations to folks. So, so they could get a, look at them first, and then we'd be following right after that. Moving forward, I will be, you know, working with the team and the ILT, highlighting different aspects of them so we can digest a little bit. Yesterday was really about the amount and the number, and then we finally made it here. But we have other business, because we're, we're coming up to the semester mark and we got work to do, so. So we actually have talked a lot about that as a team, those are here, about how we can continue to celebrate things and how we can get the word out as well through social media. So we actually have a campaign ready to go where we're highlighting some of those areas.
Campaign might be a little generous. We wanna reiterate, you know, first highlight this and we'll be seeing that in a few days. And then on an ongoing basis, bring out some of its strengths and show, and show, you know, pictures of folks doing these things. So professional learning, it could be, you know, students actively engaged, it could be, you know, support of, you know, being bright. But we want to show pictures and that sort of thing, and others that portray the good work that's happening. And then, and your points.
And what was the feedback when they started that? Anything from a high level?
Teachers, you know.
Anything unexpected? Just yay for us, or?
It, it was, I think, we worked so much on this that it was a bit of a, like a good feeling of recognition of what we think is good about Gloucester High School, too. Right, like, yes, these are the areas that we know and are confident that continuing to work on these things, continuing to value these things will, will help us in those areas of recommendation that we continue to work on. So it was a good, it was a good feeling to be able to review them. I know that, because I, you know, I want to make sure that we, as Ben was talking about, internally as well as getting the word out, highlight some of exactly what that looks like. So for example, I was talking to Amy Cam today about what does it look like to highlight and really thank some folks who are, who are students recognized as the trusted adults in the building? And, you know, what is the particular work of a trusted adult? And sharing that, you know, celebrating some of the people who know are those trusted adults, and what do they do? And sharing that with other people, you know, I have a lot of new staff, right, with COVID and, you know, just turnover and things. So what does it look like to be a good trusted adult? So this is just one example of how to take something that doesn't have a face or a personality from a list that you just saw, and how to bring that alive for people. So that's an idea of, like, internally making it alive, so people can really see that and get recognized.
Laura? So, a couple of things, but firstly, obviously, kudos to the teachers and to Amy Cam. And I really wanted to mention, Samantha and I had a meeting with NEAS in 2021, it probably was, when we were new to the committee. It must have been Alison at the time who said to us, then, James Cook is amazing. And he's caring now, yes. He said to us, we were new to the committee back then, and we were, they were like, don't, like, make sure you take care of him, because he is leading this school where it needs to go. So I just, I just want you to know that, because we had this experience, and it was really quite, it was, it was really quite impressive, so.
Thank you for sharing that. I do keep trying to keep this thing out, but I'm saying, because there's so much work behind, you know, because what I see, and I appreciate you saying it.
He saw it, is I guess what I was saying. I appreciate you saying it, because I kept saying, was that NEAS that felt like so? Now, one question about, so I read the report. And this is sort of a difficult question, but the one thing that he said under foundational element 2.2A, student learning, where they said does not meet standard. I want to understand that a little bit.
No, that's a good, a good thing. So, so I was just talking about one of the, talking about this with one of the chairs, David DiPietro, one of our math teachers, who goes out on a lot of visits. No school that we're aware of, I've been on, talking to Alison, and no, none of the visits Dave's been on, and he goes to three or four every year, have met that requirement. Because what the requirement is for is it's for a written curriculum in a standard format for every course in the school. Right? And so what's always happening is we're adding courses, we're evolving, we've got new teachers come in. And so what we were able to do, though, as you saw in the report, is move from having, you know, in our core areas, so that your math, your English, your social studies, and your core science classes, we're able to move, so we have the comprehensive curriculum in those areas. Which we've, I've had for 24 years. We did another NEAS round, right? Like, I was here for the last decennial visit, and I chaired the curriculum subcommittee back then. And we were working on it back then. So to get it to the point where we had the core elements in, and now we're working on, CDTE was done. Word language was also complete, was working on a few electives, right? Like things that are, maybe there's one teacher who teaches four different classes, and so they have a scope and sequence, but we're, that one person is responsible for them bringing that into a, what we call a UBD format, an understanding by design, backwards design format in a particular way. So that's a lot of work for that one person, it's not something that's easy to help with, because it takes the expertise of the expert in that field. So that's the work we're continuing to do. And, and the, the report that I write, and Alison and I talked about this as well, Alison Geary and I, it will give them the progress. So how do we continue to update what the work we've already done? Because curriculum's on ending, we revise things every single year. One of the things we'll be doing at the mid-year assessments is, okay, what do we need to change in the curriculum? And also continuing to have a written curriculum in more and more of what we call the singleton classes, where we might have one section of that class. So hopefully we'll, we'll get there by the three-year report in two years, by the, you know, we'll actually meet that 2A standard.
It's deceptive, I mean, you know, it's a little bit deceptive.
We have made that case several times. Can't you have it be for the core class, you know, couldn't you make that standard something that is reasonable for a high school to have, the way the others are? But it's okay, we like things to shoot for, right? We like, we like bold, bold things, so.
There was one other thing I noticed in the report, which I just want to know your feedback on, which I thought was interesting. I don't know if you guys saw this, recommendation for all staff and administrative, including the school committee, to engage in culturally responsive bias reflection training. Which I'm always, I'm always for that in every way, all the time. But just, you know, is that something that we take on? Or, you know, that's something that NEAS was encouraging, and I noticed it, so.
Yeah, no, that's great. So we, you know, we've been able to work that into our, you know, to some of our threat development in social-emotional learning, right? It's a key part of it, and we even name the aspect of, you know, having a welcoming, including school with inclusion practices. And, and I just set up the two faculty members who help run the racial equity team. We are, you know, planning our semester meeting for what's PD gonna look like in the second half of the year. We're also doing the bias reviews of our curriculum, is another place that shows up for us, right? Our, taking that bias training and then using it to apply it to the curriculum documents, but. Our, taking that bias training and then using it to apply it to the curriculum documents, but, uh, and we, we did start, I think I, I presented our Amy. Cam may have presented our, um, the world of difference, uh, partnering with A D L to, uh, have, um. Student trainers in the, the A D L as well as our racial equity team for our students, but inviting the whole, you know, community into that work is really, um. A great thing to talk about, it'll be a great thing to talk about, I, I think. And Allison and N S is really, this is one of their big changes too in, um, the cycle that, that wasn't really. Mentioned or part of or out of standard, even when they did their twenty twenty review. It's been sort of a review of the twenty twenty approach has, has been a greater emphasis on equity inclusion and, um, it's anti-bias work.
Yeah, I, I would say, what I would add to that is, um, you know, high schools, you know, digging this and working on it, working on it for a number of years, you know, and. Curriculum for instructions or stuff, and some concrete practices that, as we've spoken about, you know, um, there's also. Uh, some basics in place in terms of just instruction, um, curriculum and sort of stuff, which while we have them in place. At the elementary, just starting at, at O'Malley, so, and, and, and you wanna have some of those things in place before you then do some of this work on, you know. Cultural biases or anything, so, um, this is hard to both at the same time, okay? Um, but in terms of the school committee, you know, I think it's really important for us to understand that as, 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 uh, you know, of educators. Um, and so, you know, if the school committee was interested in that, I wanted to, you know, I think that, that's, that is a strong signal. Would be a strong, strong, you know, position of leadership, that us understanding, you know, how bias impacts. Um, our lives, our education, our schools, their stuff, um, you know, by, by looking, looking at that, so. Again, I'm not, I'm not, that's, that's your decision, you know, that's something to, to think, to think hard about, but that, that is a. Wouldn't be a strong positive signal of the importance of that work if a group of three leaders, a place school leader, that's a, you know. It's an important signal to the school, you know, which is really, um, important, obviously, about most, so. But yeah, so I think, I think it's, it's, it's probably considered and the school, we, they think about it. Now, then maybe get learning more, well, what does that mean, because, you know?
Which is, it was an interesting, yeah, thing to recommend in this kind of report, and it was a clear.
It's something that the master's charge of school, school committees is working on, so you master this, school, that is, I've been, I've understood, but more. Um, maybe I know some leaders have worked on that with master's, so they're still students. Um, so yeah, so I think, you know, again, it's something that the committee wants to learn more about as a, as a way to, to figure it out, yeah.
Any other questions?
Um. This looked like a lot of work, I'm amazed, what, like, the, the things that I learned, just like in this first year, like. The amount of work that goes on behind the scenes is, is monumental, it seems like, I'm amazed. That you guys, with the pandemic and all that stuff, have done so much, um. My, I guess what I'm wondering about is, um, how, how does this help, like, uh, say, like, on a Google search, like, um, what do you call it? Um, if, how does it help our reputation getting this accreditation, um, like the reputation of our school, um, uh, realtor sites, things like that? Um, maybe even promoting it on our website, I noticed on, on their, um, um, their website, they, you know, we can put. Like our accreditation on our Gloucester High School webpage, you know, things like that, what, what does this do to further our reputation, is I guess what I'm wondering. And how, how prominent is this and, and, you know, I know, it just, do all schools aspire to get this accreditation or?
Most in our area, most schools, uh, you know, um, especially, there are a few schools that don't participate, but most schools do. In our area, um, you know, in New England, that's one of them, I believe. Um, and, and in terms of, a- as I mentioned earlier, we, it's, uh, love talking about how to get the word out. Um, about the accreditation overall and about some of the particular commendations, so I believe there'll be a part on the website.
Yeah, so, 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 yeah, you'll, we'll be doing, sort of be a post, which link then to our new webpage on, on the, on our website. About this specifically, so folks can look at, you know, can read, can read a, uh, through an introductory text about it. And, um, look at their, the commendations quickly, we'll have it, uh, it's an infographic which folks can digest quickly. Um, uh, we're hoping for some newspaper cover down it, um, and then I think also just, you know, I think broadcasting on the website very clearly, you know. Yes, accredited, you know, high school makes a lot of sense, um, that's one thing we had not thought about, that's helpful. Uh, but yeah, so I think, I think, um, does help, the reputation does help the standing, um, it's, uh, and I think particularly, um. You know, the, the areas we're commen- highlighting some of those in concrete ways, as James was talking about, you know.
And some of the things that are commended here are difficult to quantify, M C A S, much easier to quantify. And, um, some of the work on social emotional learning, you know, equity inclusion, um, you know, some of the, you know. Professional development work, and there are things are harder to put a number on, right? And they're hard therefore to promote, so when you have a, a, a reputable organization of, of educators and professionals. Who, who spent a good amount of time with us, saying these things about the school, that's something we wanna get out there. Because it's, it, it, like I say, it, it can get eclipsed by other, other kinds of information.
Is this report, the entire report, public information?
Yes, so this, we, oh, we, we, there are things we need to do to make it available to the public, um, including through, um.
So, uh.
I think we're literally sending out to all families tomorrow.
Yeah, uh, secretly?
So, I, I, no.
Literally.
Literally, we're sending it all.
I think we said we're secretly.
Very, very quiet. No, we're literally sending out.
The entire report, is that a question?
No, we're sending a link to where they can then learn more about it, maybe so we summarize it.
It is a public report, yes.
Yes, you should have a colossal bullet point.
Intro graphic.
Infographic.
Yeah.
That people will.
Yes, yes.
Yes, yeah, you'll also share with us.
They're quite, yeah. We have a lot of opinions about it, so that'll be, no.
The, the, what you're talking about is what are they open, what are they gonna read, right?
Yeah, what are we actually gonna take?
The bullet points that you guys create, the infographic, yeah, the infographic that will, with some color, to, to, and the help.
Yes, actually, yes, no, uh, yes, we're, 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 we're taking in what you're saying and adjusting on the fly.
Yeah.
But no, but that, that's what we're getting to everybody, um, we're making it easy to follow through and link and get some snippets of it. Um, and, you know, and, you know, you'll see an effort over the next few days, you know, about this and.
An effort.
Okay, there, what happens, it's colorful, I, I, I'm not actually talking too big, because it's, it's, it's first steps, okay? Folks, it's light years ahead of us, like last week or, or two years ago, okay?
No N S in the subject.
I don't, I don't think it's gonna be N S.
Okay, great, there's something here that will understand.
Yep.
Yeah, I've learned a lot about Tampa in, in this time, so I appreciate that it, it's learning about it because it helps with communication, right? You know, I'm, I will.
Also, basically commended for achievement.
Yes, yeah, 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 so, uh, I'm reacting to the, it will not be a call post as even, okay? But it'll be something that people can ob- absorb and click through, but, okay, but it will not be called, not there quite yet.
That's.
But we have freaking infographic. What's that?
Pick a nice spot.
Okay, all right.
Discuss what.
No, not the email, the infographic.
I know, we just.
So, so for websites that say like rate schools, does it factor into like some ratings that comes in?
Part of my answer.
That was.
The next one is, the grade schools is about a few commenters, it's about standardized tests, it's about, uh, it's about the wealth of your, of your school district.
Yeah, yeah, I've, I've looked into those reports a lot.
Anything you wanna do, uh, adjust it, uh, impact the metrics, you know, welcome to do, I'm sure there's some algorithm people can do. Yeah, no, it's, it's, uh. It's out there, it, it's, uh, but no, but this is in all seriousness, your question, how do we continue to work on making sure the perception of our schools match the reality? Yeah, it's very important, and also the reality.
Yeah, with attention.
Yeah, so, so, I, I, I don't, I don't think I, I think it's an important point, um, and, and we gotta keep on, you know, efforts of. Just like this, you're talking tonight, you know, making sure folks know that this is good news, really good news, it really speaks, you know, more than just a number. And this was hard to communicate, this is an established, well, um, uh, real, a reputable organization. That has learned a lot about our school and because they know about, a lot about it, they can, they're saying great things about it, you know? And, and that, and that is of a lot of value to us, it's, it's, it's just not as easy to package, you know? So that's what we're getting better at, you know, and, and take a stab at it and get input out for efforts, you know? Um, so, but, but it, it's, it's hugely important, you're asking, hugely important.
Well, thank you, excellent work, congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, uh, we've got a little, a few, just two more things on in terms of, uh, the. Before, uh, the educational. Um, so budget development, just to give folks an update about, um, where we are on budget government and we're about to enter. Uh, the sort of public phase of budget planning and development, I just wanna give all of you and thereby the public, um, thank you, James, um. Preview of what's coming, so, um. We will start with our B N F budget meetings, which all of you are invited to, um, the first one will be next, uh, next year, on the seventeenth, the eighteenth. Uh, five o'clock here, um, and, um, those priority meeting, those budget priority meetings are when we come forward. Um, uh, school by school and the major departments to, I hope you understand what our priorities are for the, for the upcoming spring of the year. You probably hear folks say a lot, um, that there hasn't been much change from last year in terms of priorities, we're continuing on them. Um, because that's really true and, and actually really important and teaching. You'll also find out that, um, you'll see them, uh, very closely tied to the plan for ongoing improvement, especially the schools priorities, okay? Um, so the priorities that, that the department's transportation, food service, I P talk about are the ones that are in their plans for ongoing improvement. You haven't seen those far first yet, but you have seen the schools, right? So we're, we're providing, through these presentations, providing, you know, you folks with a sort of basis for the priorities for the budget, okay? Cause your, our budgets always have to fund our priorities, okay, prioritize our, our, them, okay? Um, and so in terms of the principle, it's sort of, I said this in some ways, our principles, um, for developing budget for F Y twenty four is one align. With a G P S for your plan for ongoing improvement, and again, those four priorities are teaming, student, long engagement. Strengthen instruction, then also better connect general education, special education, so those are working together as opposed to being siloed. Um, strengthen social, emotional learning, mental health support, and then strengthen specific, it's, it's education, strengthen our, um. Our creative services and specialized instruction, so really that, that's sort of blocking, tackling the more specific, um, instruction around, um. Students with disabilities and also the processes in terms of, um, evaluating, um, and identifying services for them. So that's the, that's the major, the four priorities of our three-year plan for ongoing improvement. Um, we've gotta deal with the, uh, current fiscal realities, and we're gonna be talking to you about some disruptions that have happened. Um, uh, certainly coming out of the pandemic, but also in terms of current, um, economic climate, specifically related to schools. And that's gonna, we're, we're learning more about the impacts on transportation services and also added tuition rates and a few others. That are really making an impact, make this question, um, let's sort of, you know, um, it's, it's gonna take some effort to work it through, but we'll get there. Um, and then, um, building a budget based on the current program reality, so the current program reality is really two things. That while they're, you know, part of the plan for, um, ongoing improvement, we really have to, um, address them sort of head on. That's the growing numbers of students with complex needs, um, such educated students, but, uh, ones that really have learning and social political needs and. To a degree that we haven't seen before or haven't seen the numbers set, um, that's a, uh, that's a. Um, and then the also reality is continuing to invest in O'Malley, make sure that instruction, school culture, uh, the performance really, you know, continues to, um. Uh, so, you know, so the foundations of the school really are strengthened and, um, continue, well, like we've invested in the high school and. Um, uh, many schools, so those are, those are the things that just, uh, highlight, so, those are the principles and questions of our name. And, and these things that'll be reiterated and reinforced to go along, um, when we start having much priority meetings next week. When a department of school comes in front of the B N F committee, um, they'll, uh, uh, sort of their area of strength, what are they doing well? What their priorities are for next school year, the work is already in progress on those priorities, because those typically aren't things, they're starting fresh, to most part. Um, and then what they tend to do next year for, for the strengthening of those priorities, okay? The sort of what's good now, what they're focusing on, progress are making in those areas, and then what, you know, has, has to happen next year. Because that's what we need to fund, okay, that's what we need to, you know, when I say fund, I don't mean new necessarily, I mean, continue the best of this, so much more. Uh, and then one other, um, so again, we're sort of, you know, we're at this, you know, entering this, this second row here. Um, it's not the twelfth, it's gonna be, I got way late, seventh, eighteenth, one more meeting. Um, you'll see that these are the ones on the seventeenth, the preschool, the higher schools, special education, English learner will come to expect, uh. To present their priorities, the eighteenth is the G S O'Malley and then also, um, teaching and learning. Uh, and then we go into the, uh, then those are not numbers, I was gonna say, those aren't numbers presentations, priorities presentations, okay? The numbers presentation start on February first, when, um, Gary and I present to the B N F. And then after that, to the whole school committee, beginning February, then we get into the block and tackling the budget book, public hearing budget. Public hearing itself, um, submitting it to the, um, to the mayor, voting to, you know, um, school voting to submit the budget to the mayor. And we enter the, um, city, the cities, um, uh, part of the budget process. Um, which includes public hearing, a city council review, um, vote by a city council, and then that turns to us for a final vote, should be June twenty eighth. Or maybe earlier than. Hopefully.
What is it?
It was just June twenty eighth here, but hopefully it's, hopefully it's a lead.
It's usually Fiesta Wednesday.
Right.
Every year.
Yeah, so.
That would be the twenty eighth. So.
Maybe that's.
No.
Yeah, I think, I think it might be the twenty first, but, but that's, so.
Yeah, the twenty first.
We'll, we'll get that date out. And then, so when we do come to the B F, we'll be on the first of February, so getting the numbers here. And then the fourth meeting on the eighth of February, we'll be presenting the draft budget total, significant changes from last year to this year. Um, and we'll talk, talk about some of the, the major pieces, including addition, uh, special against circuit breaker. And then better state grant adjustments, so that, that's when we get to the number, if that's much better, well, uh, three weeks later, I guess. That's it on the budget preview. Questions? Okay.
Um, I got a eyeball question, um, about the, uh, O'Malley, the rig. Um, how much of the budget is that, like, is that like a self-sustaining, like, do we?
How that works.
Yes, wondering, yeah, okay.
Maybe W.
Yeah, okay, yeah, yeah, it's always. All right, it used to be ours, yeah, well, I'm glad it's not.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, because that could be a big, uh, issue depending on.
Know how to run a rig.
Yeah. Yeah, all right, yeah, okay.
Well, um, so then, beam of the playground. So, uh, a bunch of updates on this, including we'll need a, a vote on something that, that has, uh, nearly been brought to us, but I'll get that in a moment, so December fourteenth. What it look like here? Ground's kind of frozen, rocks are being moved, we hit some ledge early after that. Then last Saturday, so when we got through all this, um, there were some, uh, real hiccups in terms of the site. And ledge and weather, and so just getting to this point, um, took a fair bit of time. Uh, then things got really rolling, as you can see that Saturday, all the equipment was installed by that point. Um, and, but, uh, the, then the, then the, um, landscaping had to be, uh, shifted around or, you know, installed, and so to speak. On right there, you see, this is Tuesday, so that's yesterday, um, you see, uh, gravel's put down over the, the, the. Dirt here, gravel, some more dirt, gravel, um, mesh, okay? That gets it to the, the correct surface level, and then today, uh, they added all the agri wood fiber. That's what that looks like, yep, and, um. And, and, and it's done, except tomorrow, they're tightening, after they install everything and they do all the, all the, um. Round, what's, what's, landscaping, the surface, okay? Um, then they have to tighten things up again, okay, so you tighten things up again tomorrow, okay? Let's, uh, tie those, those things up again, then they'll be able to play tomorrow, but they've got to. Let's try those, those things up again, then they'll be able to play tomorrow, but they've got to move the, uh, the safety precaution tape. There's a little false start, certain false starts afternoon. Because the guys who are working on this took down the safety tape and didn't have safety. We back up Saturday and tomorrow, so they get sort of final check. Prices?
Be available over the weekend.
Okay. Oh, I didn't put on here was that, uh, but as I said earlier, unfortunate, fortunate September break, you know, the, uh, the ribbon cutting will be the eighteenth. I think it's ten thirty AM. We'll get, I'll get our, they'll know as soon as. Okay. And time invited, ten thirty, ten thirty on the eighteenth. Yeah, the two sets of swings. One is complete, so that they're all there. I think you're just saying that the older tent we kept up, but the new swings have been, have been put on it.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I think, I, they look like a.
Well, they won't look, I mean, they look tall.
Yeah, yeah. So then, um, yeah, here, you can't really see it, but in the background here is the new set of swings.
Oh, okay. Oh, yeah.
I think they're, I think they're installed, they should be installed this way. I've got eyes on them today. He pictured her mine. It's pictured by Daphne's. So then another important piece, so any questions about, about the playground before we move on to another part of, part of the playground?
It's very exciting.
Yeah.
Just two for different.
Yeah.
I can suppose it would just have been a long time coming. Many people have worked on this, especially Amanda Silva for a long, uh, so.
Amanda Silva was a real, uh, lynchpin in this, a little leadership, Holly Mayer, another PCO head right now. Have been great and really supportive and very involved in, in the design of it. Um, Joey Gianni, obviously, of course, um, the school committee in terms of, uh, allowing, you know, funding for it. And, uh, and so, yeah, it's, it's, uh, to me, two new playgrounds in, in one school year is, is.
In the winter.
It doesn't happen a whole lot, you know? We made a choice on this one, you could have easily postponed this till the spring. And we took up, made a sort of risky decision by having, they were saying it's sort of in November, they'll begin December first sort of thing to the equipment because there was delay on equipment. But we did make that choice to push it, um, earlier rather than wait until the springtime. And while there's, you know, a three-week delay or so, plus the December break, um, I think it's worth it.
They can't wait to get outside. It is in the final moments of this, the kids have, have been able to be outside. So it's really exciting.
Yeah.
Really.
So, um, now then, um, a few weeks ago, um, Director of Veteran Services, Adam Cucuru, uh, who's just been great and does great work with the schools. I just, you know, just wanted to take him home and say he's a great partner. Uh, the veteran affairs, our veteran services, you know, great folks. Uh, they, he's always including our teams, you know, one of the most recent example was the Veterans Day ceremony here at the high school. Anyway, reached out and, uh, it brought my attention to something I didn't know. Honestly, was that you have a the Beaman, um, playground has a memorial to Lieutenant Earl F. Rice, who's a World War Two veteran. And the, it just so happens that the, um, the memorial, the playground is here. The memorial is here. Right by the ranch at Cherry Street. And it's a great looking memorial, you know, a stone wall, a rock with a nice plaque on it. Um, and, but it's just nowhere near, and, and, and it was installed a long time ago. Let me give you some of the details here. It's, it was all nineteen fifties, but I think before that school was built. Okay. I mean, maybe it was, was rebuilt, I think. So it's not quite in the right place. And he approached myself and also the mayor with, um, is there, now we're doing player, is there a chance to move it? So it's, you know, closer to the playgrounds. It's, it's, it's memorial, memorializing, okay? I mean, in his honor. So just a few things about Earl Rice. Um, so the playground has been honoring him for many years, although we sort of folks lost, sort of lost track of it because the memorial's far away. He was a first lieutenant in the US Army Air Force. Uh, he's a son of Earl Rice and Avis A. Thompson Rice, um, graduate of Oxford High School, nineteen thirty-eight. Like many, um, men at that time, he enlisted in the, uh, armed forces just after, shortly after graduation, nineteen thirty-nine. Um, like a lot of men as well, he, you know, sort of went into service and then got married as he was, you know, shipping off. Um, uh, overseas, uh, he flew B twenty-four Librarians, um, in the Pacific Theater. And then died during the service in Lake Island, it's a, on, on September nineteen forty-four. You have in your packet when, um, the playground was named in his honor. Um, and what, uh, I'm supporting and, and Adam Cucuru approached us about was, uh, replacing that memorial close to playground. So it'd be more, have a more proud place for students and families to know about him, about his story and who the playground is named for. We haven't decided where yet. Wanted to, uh, talking with, um, the mayor, Adam, uh, figured that getting the, the need to have a vote on supporting that move will be a great first step and then allowing us to figure out, um, the block attacking TPW and veterans services, you know, where is the best spot? But wanted to bring that to, to. So playground's here. I mean, that's the old playground.
So it looks like it was, it's on the road so that you can see it from the road to know the playground is there as opposed to being in the playground. Like at veteran school, the rock is up at the top of the road where you walk by playground's down in the corner. So that was probably their intention at that time. Not saying that's the right.
Right. I, I think, I think that's very valid. And, and, and I don't mean, and as you know, the school was built after that. So, um, anyway, so.
So can I, so would the plan be to move that memorial or to create a different?
No, move that memorial, which, which is a, a couple of things. So, uh, I believe when we, uh, West Parish, we reedicated West Parish Playground Four. Um, for that, for the, uh, I can't remember the name, recognize that was moved once, when the building rebuilt. Okay. Um, decided not to move the tomatoes one, um, leave it where it is. And those were some folks in the community to make that decision. And then, um, so, and then, uh, just recently moved a veteran, being, being a veteran's memorial from outside the high school, over stage for it. So moving memorials is not an uncommon thing, um, but it would be to, to keep the same rock and plaque. Whether or not it has this sort of design with, with a wall, I guess, I think that's TPT. It's been, you know, left that far though, but, but the, 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 but certainly to keep this.
Right.
Yeah, that was what Adam, Mr. Cucuru said.
And I know that there's, there's probably no way to know this, this point, and this would be a DPW question probably. But obviously we're living ten years down the road at a new school. And that, you know, we have no idea. I'm not presupposing that we do, but that's the biggest piece of land around, right? The Beaman spot. So, um, I would just love for that to be brought into the conversation about where it goes, so that we're not moving it again. Right? That, you know, at some point, maybe somebody's going to be developing plans for a new building on that spot.
I think we keep moving and keep celebrating them.
Yeah. I don't think it's the end of the world if we prove it for a third time.
Cause we're talking about it. We never talked about it, right?
Yeah.
Brings to the attention.
In, whenever this was, the early fifties, whenever they put this there, it made sense. Nowadays, you know, one of this, seven, seven years later, makes sense to move it close to playground. We'll build a new school, combined school perhaps, the Beaman site. Move it at another time makes sense. So.
Okay.
But I think, I mean, most of us, I've only lived here my whole life. I never was aware.
Between the playground and.
Right.
Yeah, I wasn't either and I go there weekly.
Is it visible from Cherry Street?
Yeah, you walk right by it. It's visible there, but not from the school.
Not from the school.
I think it would be cool to repurpose that little area.
Of Beaman sign. So you want a motion to approve movement of the Earl F. Rice Junior Memorial at Beaman Memorial Elementary School. Second. Okay, so this is, um, an approval to move it based upon what the veterans affairs and the schools decide is the appropriate spot, which we know will be closer in part of the playground.
You know, we'll pull back because we're figuring it out and then that may include, you know, here or here type of thing. You know, if we have some arms like that, yeah, we'll keep you guys informed.
And will the students be involved with like the re-moralization of that?
Haven't gotten there yet, um, but that's a, it's a great idea.
Yeah.
I don't know if something was done with, with West Parish, but even if it wasn't.
I think there was.
Yeah, yeah. So that's what's area. Yeah.
Okay. Any more session? Okay, well, Bob, Bob, please, Mr. Minion.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yeah.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes, Ms. Lisa.
Yes, Jefferson Glancy.
Yes, Mr. Martin.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Uh, thanks, Adam. Okay, we have one more grant to approve, um, from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Number two oh nine, improving ventilation and air quality grant in the amount of four hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars and forty-two hundred dollars. For the O'Malley Beaman and Buck House Schools. I said.
Okay.
And I think it's kind of self-explanatory, but.
Well, it's, um, a grant from DSC, uh, for improving ventilation and air quality. Um, and we put it together to focus specifically on, um, HVAC, RUT, RTUs to supply fresh air in classrooms in two elementary schools, Beaman and Buck House. And also to, uh, provide additional fresh air to the kitchen.
Has there been discussions with the DPW that that's what we want to do?
Yes, Mike Hale was part of it. Mike Hale works with Karen Fresh. My, my kill.
Okay.
You know, soon we heard, explained to them, I'm not tired of Mike Hale.
Yes.
Do this. Is it okay?
And when would this be implemented?
Um, so as, once the grant money comes in, they can start putting things that work out for bit and things like that. I would present.
Yeah. Probably the summer.
That would make sense. That would be up to the DPW.
This, this actually is part of this is tied to the modulars. So, so the modulars, that wasn't completed last, was roof documents.
Yeah.
So this is a, a way of, of doing that.
RTUs.
Yeah.
RTUs.
Yeah. The, uh, the, uh, the timeline of this was, was, was short. And while it was the first round, we can't be caring to give a second round. So Mike thought it was best to grow the thing that were already, you know, everything pipeline. That's the thing. And so that's, that's, that's all. Since we, 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 there was, there was granted plans and. It's fine. That's the way it's supposed to work.
Is there going to be a surplus balance? I mean, is this the, some total as budgeted? How did this guy come along?
Okay. Another piece is, is, is when I first heard Mike goes, you know, that doesn't go very far. I know that. But no, it's, no, you know, it's, it's, it's all, yeah, I mean, like, you know, as far as like main planning in the future go resonates. Yeah.
For the one good job we get done.
No, 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 no.
So, so it's an allocation really of DSC and we don't write down, it's almost half a million dollars. And, um, we reached out to Mike Hale to see what do we prioritize that would fix this budget. And, um, this is what he came up with for, to help out, um, three schools. Pretty good.
Great. Rob, Rob, please.
Mr. Minion.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yeah.
Never.
Yes.
Ms. Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Lisa.
Yes.
Jefferson Glancy.
Yes.
Melvin.
Yes.
That's been on the agenda is an update on the East Veterans Elementary School.
Right. So. My screen sharing is paused. That means something. My screen sharing is paused. So a couple of dates, so some, uh, some big movement, um, in terms of things that are happening at East Veterans. Um, so first of all, uh, December fifteenth or just after our, the day after our last school meeting, we had a, um, entire product team met with MSBA. Uh, sort of the first official meeting with them. And, um, and so it gives some news, one, the in-person site, we'll have in-person site visits by MSBA to the product site every month going forward. Okay. Um, pro pay submissions and reimbursement. So big piece here is obviously getting reverses from the MSBA. Um, and, uh, that's, so that's, and that's now happening. And the submissions go through a system called Pro Pay. We are starting with all, the, the city does this work in terms of that, um, and the city's been great and, um, with getting kicked off. And we're starting with the W T region voice, that's the construction manager at risk. Um, those are large invoices, so we're submitting all those first, um, to get them first as quick as possible. And MSBA was clear on two things. One, clear, and they're committed to getting us our reverses quickly as possible, working with us. Working with us to the extent that, um, there are some new city staff who aren't up to speed on Pro Pay. They offered to trade our staff or the C, you know, department, um, John Dunn's office to help them know how to use it. So there'd be, uh, just a good turn. We knew, we know what to do, or it's not we, city staff know how to have you that. And Jennifer Conerton is sort of our product manager or sort of made contact, uh, so quote unquote, and not make this up. But she, uh, has a lot of, just said, puts to the product, really, that's been a little engine that, we just bump plug it away, you know, plug it away and make progress. They're really pleased with the progress. They're really pleased it's on, on schedule, on budget. They have been in touch with us, you know, lately, but, um, certainly been keeping an eye on things. And, um, really appreciate it, team, and appreciate the work we've been doing. So that's, that was a great meeting and obviously much closer connection with them and partnership going forward. And then some important milestones we reached. So all rooftop speaking rooftop units, all rooftop units, um, were arrived, um, uh, just before December break, um, which was a big deal in terms of, uh, materials and meet times and installation is all already underway. Um, we also received all the, the millwork and the pace work. Um, and that's being, uh, installed now. Uh, they're completing for, for the year, I think perhaps this week or right now. Um, and also completing the piping and electrical connections to the rooftop units. So the rooftops are, you know, units arrived, they, they arrive by being put on the roof and then very quickly have been doing the electrical plan, uh, related to that. And then ongoing work, so continuing sheet rock finishing and painting classrooms in both building A and B. The curtain wall insulation, which is a very large window in, in front of the building, in, in, inside the building. Um, building B elevator installation is happening. The coastal grid, you know, ceilings are happening, that kind of stuff. Um, and then classroom lighting, electrical systems, HVAC are all happening as well. So they're really, um, this is a lot of interior work. Cabinetry, painting, um, you know, uh, installation of the sheet rock is our stuff, but it's real. It's not finished work by any means, but it's, it's really making progress on the interior now. It's great.
I have a question. And I don't know, Mayor, maybe you might know the answer to this as well as superintendent, but, um, so having worked at the courthouse for thirty years and, and being in China facilities, I've worked with the DPW on a daily basis with all the issues that, that happen in that building from the courthouse floor. And I know it's always a guessing game is what's behind the walls, you know, like how would things install? And they're always looking for plans to try to figure it out. So I guess my question is being, being appreciative of their work and their attempts to try to fix, fix things. Has the city employees been brought into the building to see what is going on so that if there is an issue down the road, they know how things will build? In other words, you can see systems in place now.
So we've let a sheet rock goes.
So this is, this is actually a great point. This is a great question, actually. It's a good question.
I don't know what it's called, but they, they are, one of the videos they do is documenting everything from once, um, once a month or every two weeks, I think. They literally do a video of the entire. Everything from once a month or every two weeks, I think, they literally do a video of the entire space. So whatever sheet or camera, every wall, so they can see what the piping is coming down and behind the wall, so they know exactly where they are. And that is a complete record of how it was built and what is where.
So they'll have access to that.
Yes. Yeah, it's it's like a really big difference, right, and it's stand helpful.
Yeah, they're not looking at notes, they're looking at.
Right.
Okay, so then the video, they watch the video, I remember like, you know, diagrams.
Yeah.
I know when when.
Oh, yeah.
We had a new music venue built, we, I was always looking through the as builds, as they call them, right, like, okay, this is modern. Like, you know, a step further.
Yeah, so have all those, plus this, this, you know, video record, and I think, calling, even calling it a video record is underplaying it. And how it's cataloged, how it's been brought up and utilized. But they've been clear about this, you know, all the way through this, what they're documenting it, so, yeah, but it's it's, it'll be a different version of it. You know, some folks have to go in this sort of thing, what's there, and no one wants there behind the walls. Yeah, no guessing.
Well, Joe Macedo has found a billing committee, so for all the system things and everything, there's definitely been correctly.
Yeah.
So. Anybody have any business? Okay, motion to adjourn.
Don't move. Mr. Minio.
Yes.
Ms. Prince.
Yes.
Yes, this is Watson.
Yes.
Ms. Reese.
Yeah.
Yes.
This meeting is adjourned, thank you everyone who attended. Good night.